April 15th, annual town meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. My name's Maureen Frank. I'm the town clerk. I just want to let you in the audience know that there's the resolution is available outside the auditorium on the table. Oh, that was a practice room. Okay, thank you. Thanks. That's right. We're good? Okay. So again, welcome to the April 15th annual town meeting. The resolution is available outside the auditorium on the table. The warning for this meeting was published in the Hartford Current on April 2nd, 2024, and they are also available outside the auditorium on the table. At this time, I would like the to ask for a motion to waive the reading of the warning for the minute for the meeting. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Gary. A second? Great. Everybody agree? Object? We're good? Okay. Motion passes. I would also ask for a nomination for a moderator for tonight's meeting. Okay, Chris Hoheb to be the moderator. Do I have a second? Thank you. So that now passes and we are we will introduce Attorney Hoheb and he will take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Christian Hoheb. Thank you for nominating and electing me as the moderator for the annual town meeting. Before we begin, would you please join rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. I'm now going to describe the procedures that we're going to follow tonight. Your decision tonight on the town's operating budget for 2024, 2025 is not final until approved or rejected by voters at the polls on April 25th, 2024. Please note that voters on that date in that referendum cannot change the budget. Voters can simply vote yes or no. If a majority of those on April 25th reject the budget and the number of those voting equals at least 15% of the number of registered electors, the town council will recommend a second budget, which must be lower than the budget rejected at the referendum, but then goes to a second town meeting and a second referendum. If the second recommended budget is rejected at the referendum, the council shall meet and shall adopt a budget the upcoming fiscal year, which shall be lower than the second recommended budget. In this town meeting this evening, we may increase, decrease, or authorize an additional appropriation that is not in the recommended budget presented tonight. Any increase, decrease, or addition of any appropriation shall require the affirmative vote of at least two-thirds majority of the voters voting on such item. Here's the kicker, provided that there are at least 300 voters voting on such item. I don't see the support for that. Additionally, a motion shall recommend the amounts by which one or more specific appropriations identified by account number or similar designation may be increased or decreased to equal the total amount of the increase or decrease. The recommended budget reflecting any such increases, decreases, or addition of any appropriation that is not in the recommended budget shall be submitted to a referendum. We have seven items on the agenda tonight. The first, that the town report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023 be approved. Second, that the budget recommended by the town council for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2024 be approved. Third, that the town of Farmington appropriate $3,385,000 for the replacement of the roof at Westwoods Upper Elementary School. Four, that the town of Farmington appropriate $2,750,000 for the replacement of the HVAC system and roof at the police facilities. Five, that the town of Farmington appropriate $1,400,000 for the acquisition of a new engine and fire engine pumper. Six, that the town of Farmington appropriate $1,750,000 for the acquisition of a Quint fire truck. And seven, to consider and act upon any other business which may properly come before said meeting. Oh my gosh, much better. Thank you so much. Seven, to consider and act upon any other business which may properly come before said meeting. We will consider each agenda item separately. To place each of these items before you, I'll call for a motion and for someone else to second it, I'll then ask the appropriate town officials to describe the item for informational purposes. I will then recognize anyone who wishes to speak on the motion before us. I ask you to go one be careful because it's a little dark over there, but I ask you to go to one of the microphones in the aisles and begin by stating your name and address for the record. I ask that you keep your comments to the agenda topic and to present them as briefly as possible. If you have a question, please direct the question to me as moderator and indicate whom you would like to answer it. Please confine your question to the topic under discussion and do not enter into a debate. If the comment or question is not germane to the topic at issue, I may rule it out of order. I will call for a motion to adjourn the meeting to a referendum to be held at the regular polling places on April 25th, 2024 between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM at the conclusion of this meeting. Okay. Motion one, may I have a motion to move the first item contained in the warning that the town report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023 be approved? Do I have a motion? Did you hear anybody? Yes. Second? Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Motion number two, may I have a motion to move the second item contained in the warning that the budget recommended by the town council for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2024 be approved? Do we have a motion? Second? Okay, I'll now call upon Joe Capitofaro, Chair of the Town Council, Kathleen Blonsky, Town Manager, and Kathleen Greeter, Superintendent of Schools, to begin the presentation.
Give you time to move around all this stuff. Thank you very much, Mr. Hoheb, and good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for coming out and everybody that's watching on Zoom. Welcome to the annual town meeting on the town council's fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. The decisions the town council made pertaining to the budget are based on several factors: the town strategic plan, the seven-year capital plan, long-term financial forecasts, the current economic climate, and striving to keep town services and educational programs at a high level. This recommended budget was unanimously approved by the town council after much hard work and deliberation last month. Prior to this presentation, the budget has gone through several reviews and adjustments. In January, department requests began coming in to the town manager. The town manager decreased the town manager decreased her department requests by $1,452,110, which reduced the overall budget increase from 7.03% to a 2.80% prior to presenting this to the council. This slide shows a summary of the budget process. A public hearing was held on the town manager's proposed seven-year capital improvement plan on February 27th, 2024. A public hearing was held on the town manager's recommended operating budget on March 12th, 2024. The town council held workshop sessions on March 13th and 14th to finalize our budget. The town council held a public hearing on April 1st, 2024 and unanimously approved the budget with no additional changes. Tonight, the annual town meeting adjourns to a referendum vote on April 25th, 2024. During the March budget workshops, the town council made the following changes to the town manager's recommended budget. They reduced the Board of Education's budget by an additional $924,755, added $30,000 to the town portion of the budget, and decreased the capital budget by $597,000. The town council also increased the fund balance contribution contribution by $350,000 for a total appropriation of $1,200,000. It should be noted that it is likely that the use of the 1.2 million in last year's budget will not be needed because of unexpected revenues. All these changes were incorporated into the town council's recommended budget. Farmington is a great town in which we live, work, play, and prosper. On behalf of the town council, I want to thank you, the town manager, the staff, and for all their hard work on the budget. I also want to thank the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools for their hard work. This was a unanimous budget that we all worked collaboratively on. I ask the community to come out and vote on April 25th, 2024. I will now turn my presentation over to Kathy Blonsky, our town manager, and then to the Board of Education, who will present the details of their budget.
Good evening, members of the public. I present for your review the town council's recommended budget for fiscal year 2425. The town council's budget target, the town's strategic plan, the town's capital improvement policy, and our long-term financial forecast were the policy guidelines at the forefront when formulating this budget. This budget is a maintenance budget that maintains our current high level of service and increases our capital funding levels. I will now review the town council's recommended budget. Expenditures. The general fund budget includes the recommended spending for the town, for the school system, for debt service, and for capital improvements. The recommended budget for Westwood's Golf Course, the Recreation Fund, and solid waste collection and disposal are also included for your review. The budget is broken down into three categories: expenditures, grand list, and revenues, which are used to develop a tax rate. The total recommended budget for fiscal year 2425 is $128,601,165, an increase of $7,334,932, or 6.05% above the current budget. Town operations. The recommended town budget is $35,021,657, an increase of $982,389, or 2.89% above current expenditures. This includes general administration with an increase of 4.05%, public safety an increase of 3.25%, public works a decrease of 1.19%, community and recreation a decrease of 1.05%, and other an increase of 4.06%. Some areas to note: contractual obligations and overall personnel costs town-wide have increased due to the current job market and an effort to attract and retain employees. A portion of the seasonal summer help funding was restored in the Highway Department. These seasonal employees enable the Highway Division to complete more ground maintenance tasks during the busy summer months. A portion of the seasonal help funding was restored in the Police Department. These were seasonal employees hired during the summer months to patrol the various walking trails and parks throughout town. This budget includes half a year funding for a Recreation Director in accordance with the town's strategic plan. We've also shifted funds from the Community and Recreation Operating Budget to the Recreation Fund to offset some of this cost. The registrar's of voters account has increased due to the early voting mandate. This increase includes staffing supplies and equipment for early voting events. The state of Connecticut has contributed $10,500 to offset a small portion of these costs. The contribution to the Farmington Library is $2,975,000, which is a 2.8% increase above current budget levels. Utility accounts are stable throughout the budget. Town expenditure by object. The budget is now separated by object, which includes salaries, benefits, supplies, equipment, contractual, and utilities. The increase for salaries is 3.02%. The increase for benefits is 4.07%. There is a decrease of 1.94% for materials and supplies. There is an increase of 7.89% for equipment. The increase for contractual is 2.99%. Lastly, there is a decrease of 2.07% for utilities. Debt. The debt group of accounts includes appropriations to make principal and interest payments on the town's long-term debt obligations. The total amount recommended for the next year's fiscal year is $11,426,268. This is an increase of $1,461,525, or 14.67%. The funds in these accounts pays for lease financing obligations, clean water fund loans, and the principal and interest due on the town's existing bonded debt. Funds are also included in this account for the interest payments on a $28 million debt issuance plan for August of 2024. All the debt proceeds will be used to pay the expenses associated with the building of the new Farmington High School. Refuge collection. The refuge collection budget includes the cost of collecting and disposing of solid, bulky, and hazardous waste generated by our residents and the town's landfill operation. The budget proposes no rate increase. The annual fee will be $268 per household. Capital improvements. The recommended general fund appropriation to support the first year of the capital improvement plan is $2,283,000. This is less than our capital funding policy, but is significantly more than last year's capital appropriation. There are also four bond questions. In accordance with our financial forecast, bonding large projects and equipment on a consistent basis and adhering to our capital improvement policy enables us to fund our capital needs. Summary of capital projects year one: $1,100,000 Board of Education, General Fund, which are shown on the screen; $1,183,000 to Town, General Fund Projects, which are also shown on the screen; for a total of $2,283,000 in General Fund Projects. Summary of other appropriations. These capital projects shown on the screen are being funded by other funding sources and not through the General Fund or taxpayer dollars. These funding sources include donations, state dollars, and user fees totaling $1,115,000. Next, the first year of the capital plan proposes four bonding questions that will be discussed later tonight. Board of Education: $2,800, I mean $2,385,000 for Westwood's roof replacement. In the Fire Department: $1,400,000, engine eight replacement at East Farms Fire Station; $1,750,000, a Quint fire truck at Tunxus Hoes Fire Station; Police Department: $2,750,000 for HVAC and roof replacement. The total bonding authorization recommended is $8,285,000. Expenditure summary. The total recommended budget for fiscal year 2425 is $128,601,165, an increase of $7,334,932, or 6.05% above the current budget. I will now call on Kathy Greeter, Superintendent of Schools, to present the Board of Education's budget. Thank you.
The budget development process in Farmington is grounded in our strategic improvement documents each year. This alignment is critical because our financial plan must advance the implementation of our core improvement documents across all schools and classrooms. From initial school submissions to the refinement of our operating budget through school and program reviews of all requests, zero-based budgeting practices were utilized. This slide shows Farmington's mission statement, which promotes personal and academic excellence for all students, as well as the acquisition of all of the skills and dispositions outlined within our vision of the Global Citizen, or VOGC, ensuring Farmington students lead the way now and in the future. The next slide outlines all of our core improvement documents, which serve as a foundation for strategic planning, teacher and administrator goal-setting, hiring and recruiting, professional development, as well as our budget recommendations and all elements of our work with students each day. With our core improvement documents at the forefront of the development of this budget, here are the major themes of the 2425 budget. There are several unique themes of this budget. The 2425 operating budget maintains academic excellence through innovative programming pre-K 12, promotes student-centered teaching and learning, supports increased student need in the area of academic growth and social, emotional well-being, addresses needs and continuous improvement related to transportation, safety, registration, and residency, addresses a restoration of funding due to the 2324 budget reductions, addresses the need to move funding off of the SRR3 ARP grant to the operating budget as this grant funding is ending, addresses cost increases across supply, equipment, and many other accounts due to the economy, factors in other grant funding to offset costs to mitigate the overall increase in the operating budget, contains costs through zero-based budgeting, reductions of over $1.4 million, and efficiencies to maintain current programming, and maintains class size levels in accordance with Board of Education policy. This slide provides an overview of the recommended operating budget for the 2425 school year. The total recommended budget amount: $79,544,240, or a dollar increase of $3,607,018, or a percent increase over the 2324 budget of 4.75%. The rankings listed on this slide are statewide, including all school districts with one spending the most and 166 spending the least. It is important to note that Farmington ranks 111 in the most up-to-date per pupil expenditure reported by the Connecticut State Department of Education as compared to all other Connecticut school districts. The first budget driver is salaries, the 100 series, which accounts for 66% of the total recommended budget. The budget increase in the salary line is 5.05% and reflects negotiated contractual obligations. As a reminder, we have additional salary costs moving off SRR3 ARP grant funding due to both reductions in the 2324 budget and/or new positions due to student need. This series reflects all of the association salary increases for the coming year, which are highlighted on this slide. The next budget driver is insurance, or the 200 series, which accounts for 15% of the total recommended budget with a 3.84% decrease. The 200 series includes employee health benefits with a high deductible HSA and co-insurance, as well as life insurance and long-term disability costs. Services is the next budget driver, the 300 series, which accounts for 15% of the total recommended budget. There is an increase of 10.90% in the services series driven by new transportation services, a restoration of funding due to budget reductions in the 2324 budget, moving service costs from SRR3 ARP to the operating budget, and increased costs across many areas of the services account due to the economy. This account also provides special services, consultation services, and tuition costs for outplacements, major facility projects, K-8 summer school, as well as technology-based operational systems and professional development. The next series is supplies, or the 400 series, which accounts for 3% of the total recommended budget. The supply series reflects a 16.75% increase for restoration of supply funding due to budget reductions in the 2324 budget and increased costs across all areas of the supplies accounts due to the economy. The 500 series, or Equipment Series, accounts for approximately 1% of the total recommended budget and reflects a decrease of 0.43%. Dues and fees, or the 600 series, accounts for less than 1% of the total recommended budget, showing a 7.03% increase. This account includes memberships and organizations that support our strategic improvement effort. This account also includes the town of Farmington's negotiated liability, umbrella, and motor vehicle insurance for the school district. Kerma contractual obligations are the primary driver of this increase. Here is a view of the entire 2425 operating budget, all of which I've reviewed within this budget presentation. In summary, the 2425 recommended budget is responsive to our students' needs and supports our strategic improvement priorities. The 4.75% increase will maintain educational programming for the coming school year. At all times, our financial plan is centered upon our students, their needs, and their future as self-aware individuals, empowered learners, disciplined thinkers, engaged collaborators, and civic-minded contributors. Here is an overview of the 2425 Board of Education's requested capital improvement budget. The total capital improvement budget request is $1,100,000 capital cash with $2,384,445 for the bonding of the Westwood's roof, for a total capital improvement request of $3,484,445. On the next slide, our seven-year capital improvement plan is listed on this slide and provides an overview of the 2425 requests and out-year requests. I want to thank you for your attention to this presentation. Thank you.
The grand list is broken down into three categories: real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles. The real estate account shows a 0.56% increase. The personal property account shows a 3.55% increase, and the motor vehicles account shows a 4.63% decrease. In summary, the grand list increased by point, I'm sorry, the grand list increased by 0.36% or $16,78,226 for a total grand list of $4,510,359,949. Revenues. I've broken down revenues into nine categories: other property taxes, license, permits, fines, and penalties, interest, grants, service charges, other, Westwood's contribution, and fund balance. In summary, recommended non-tax revenues are $15,185,923, or a 9.53% increase over the current year. Recommended tax and mill rate. The recommended general fund budget will require a property tax of 25.45 mills, which is an increase of 1.24 mills, or a 5.13% tax increase. In other words, $100,000 of assessed value equals $2,545 in taxes. Based on a tax rate of 25.45 mills, the average residential assessment will see an increase of $374.27 in their taxes. Last year's budget had a 0% increase in expenditures and the capital budget was reduced 74%. Drastically reducing our capital budget year after year is neither sustainable or best practice. Even though this capital budget does not meet our capital funding policy, it does significantly increase capital funding from last year and includes four bonding questions. In conclusion, overall, the town operating budget is a maintenance budget with limited expansion of town services. Some, but not all, of our reductions from last year were restored in this budget, but in general, this recommend bud, this recommended budget should enable us to maintain a high level of service. The townwide referendum is Thursday, April 24th, at your usual voting location. Thank you.
All right, that completes the initial presentation on the July 1, 2024 budget. Does anyone wish to ask a question or make a comment? I'm sorry, it's hard for me to see because there are two lights right here. So does anyone wish to be heard? You go to the microphones, state your name, your address, identify who you have a question for. Help me out here. I see no one. Okay. Anybody out there? All right. At the conclusion of tonight's meeting, we're going to have a motion to adjourn on all these matters. So failing to see or hear anyone with a question or a comment, I'm going to move to the next motion. May I have a motion to move the fifth item contained in the warning that the town of Farmington appropriate $2,385,000 for the replacement of the roof at Westwood's Upper Elementary School? I'll now call upon Kathleen Blonsky, Town Manager, to begin the presentation.
The first bond question is to appropriate $2,385,000 for the replacement of the roof at Westwood's Upper Elementary School. The Westwood's Upper Elementary School roof is original to the 2002 building, making it 22 years old. It is comprised of 35,800 square feet of BUR roofing and 65,760 square feet of asphalt shingle roofing. The most recent roof assessment completed in 2022 slated that the majority of the roof is in fair condition. The appropriation of $2,385,000 for the replacement of Westwood's Upper Elementary School roof would include the design in 2024 and the construction in 2025. Construction will include the removal and replacement of all roofing material, flashing, and roof chains. Thank you.
Construction will include the removal and replacement of all roofing material, flashing, and roof chains. Thank you.
All right. That completes the initial presentation on that motion. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? This is motion number three. The appropriation for two million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand for the replacement of the roof at Westwood's Upper Elementary School. Last call? Okay. Failing to hear a response, I'm going to move on to motion number four. May I have a motion to move the sixth item contained in the warning? The town of Farmington appropriate two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of the HVAC system and roof at the police facility. I will now call upon Kathleen Blonsky, Town Manager, to begin the presentation.
The second bond question is to appropriate two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of the HVAC system and the roof at the Farmington Police Facility. In two thousand twenty-three, the town of Farmington commissioned an HVAC systems condition analysis report, which found that the police department was in need of renovations to bring the existing systems, equipment, and control systems up to the current construction and energy standards. During the summer of two thousand twenty-three, the building's air conditioning units were inoperable for an estimated six weeks. The roof at the police department is twenty-six thousand square feet, and it is original to the two thousand and two building, making it twenty-two years old. Because the air conditioning units proposed are rooftop units, it's deemed most efficient and economical to replace the flat sections of the roof at the same time as the installation of the new HVAC systems. The pitched sections of the shingled roof remain in good condition and do not need to be replaced at this time. The appropriation of two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the police department would include two million, three hundred thousand to replace the existing HVAC system, coupled with four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace the sections of the flat roof where the HVA systems lie. Thank you.
That completes the initial presentation of motion four. The item contained in the warning that the town of Farmington appropriate two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of the HVAC system and the roof at the police facility. Anyone wish to be heard on that? Questions, comments? Failing to hear any, I'm moving on to motion five. May I have a motion to move the seventh item contained in the warning that the town of Farmington appropriate one million, four hundred thousand dollars for the acquisition of a new engine eight fire engine pumper? I will now call upon Kathleen Blonsky, Town Manager, to begin the presentation.
The next bond question is to appropriate one million, four hundred thousand dollars for the acquisition of a new engine eight fire engine pumper for East Farms Fire Station. By purchasing a new engine eight, East Farms would retire engine ten, which has become the town's most costly apparatus to maintain. The appropriation of one million, four hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of a new engine eight for the East Farms Fire Station would enable the town to retire engine ten and reduce overall apparatus maintenance fees for the fire department. Thank you.
That completes the presentation, initial presentation of motion five regarding the town of Farmington appropriation of one million, four hundred, four hundred thousand dollars for the acquisition of a new engine eight fire engine pumper. Anyone wish to be heard on this? Questions? Comments? Failing to hear any, I'm moving to the next motion, motion six. We have a motion to move the eighth item contained in the warning that the town of Farmington appropriate one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the acquisition of a quint fire truck. I'm going to call upon Kathleen Blonsky, Town Manager, to begin the presentation.
The last bond question is for the appropriation of one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase a quint fire truck for the Tunksis Hoes Fire Station. Because a quint fire truck combines the equipment capabilities of a ladder truck and the water pumping ability of a fire engine, the acquisition would allow for the retirement of engine five and rescue fifteen. Both trucks are twenty years old. The appropriation of one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of a quint fire truck for the Tunksis Hoes Fire Station would enable the fire department to downsize the overall fleet while reducing maintenance costs for the fire department.
Okay. Uh, any questions, any comments on that? Anyone? Last call? All right, I'm going to call on Kathleen Blonsky for a conclusion of all the bonding items.
The four proposed bond questions for April twenty-fifth, twenty-four budget referendum are as follows: that the town of Farmington appropriate two million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the replacement of the roof at Westwood's Upper Elementary School, that the town of Farmington appropriate two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of the HVAC system and the roof at the police facility, that the town of Farmington appropriate one million, four hundred thousand dollars for the acquisition of a new engine eight fire engine pumper, and lastly, that the town of Farmington appropriate one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the acquisition of a quint fire truck. Even though each of the questions will be shown individually on the ballot, they would be financed as a group. Finance this way, the debt service due to these projects in the first year, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, is a tax increase of twenty-one dollars and ten cents for the average assessed home. The average impact due to these projects over the next five years is thirty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents per year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, motion seven. Is there any other business to come before the town meeting tonight? Anyone else have any questions? Any other business to come before the town meeting tonight? Last call? All right, in just a moment, I'm going to ask for a motion, uh, for an adjournment, but I, I have to take a moment thank, uh, the Board of Education and the council for all their hard work on this budget. They've put in incalculable hours to bring us to this point today, so. I am going to ask for a motion that the annual town meeting be adjourned to referendum vote on resolutions considered pursuant to the items in the annual town meeting notice to be held on April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, between the hours of six AM and eight PM at the polling places indicated in the notice. Uh, I need a motion and then a second. All right, I'm now going to, I'm going to have a voice vote on adjourning to April twenty-fifth. All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, the motion carries. We're adjourned to April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you, everyone. We're adjourned to the referendum.